So we're going to call this meeting the School Committee to Order.
Jean Fox.
Here.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Sherri Barron.
Here.
Mark Clark.
Here.
Derek Bracia.
Here.
Laura Ransdine.
Here.
Will Van Quin.
Here.
And I see Lake Cam is recording the meeting. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone here for public participation of that kind that's on the agenda? We have our student reps here tonight. We would like to have a quick update if we may, gentlemen.
All right, so our top five students were honored at an S- SCC Academic All-Stars Luncheon. They enjoyed lunch and heard a keynote speaker from ARHS graduate Jackie Bruno. Great news, the U.S. News and World Report ranked ARHS number 62 out of 395 mass schools as well as in the top 8% of nationwide schools. A special congratulations to Jacqueline Lee, class of 2019, for her winning artwork submission to the Justice of Plymouth County Trial Court entitled "Law Day." It is now on display in the Plymouth County Courthouse. Students in Chemistry and Engineering were treated to a very engaging scientific presentation from Raytheon developers and engineers. Visitors from Raytheon who brought interesting and cutting-edge technology afforded students in attendance with great information about chemistry and engineering as well as physics. Thank you to Mrs. Ramie for making this possible. Special thanks to SRO Bartholomew, Lakeville Police Department, Lieutenant Perkins, Lakeville Fire Department, Chief O'Brien, Plymouth County Sheriff Department, Deputy Parham Wareham District Corps, Boston Med Flight, Dalbord McNeven, and Midtown Towing for the grade 11 and 12 distracted driving demonstration. Thank you to the students who participated and Superintendent Madeiras for his support of this endeavor. Our unified track team traveled to Dartmouth High School for a try meet, including Bishop Connolly. The team excelled in both competition and inclusion aspects of the meet. A number of students achieved personal records, and the 4x400 crew made a personal best.
Math MCAS took place past week. Our Grade 10 students worked diligently on this two-day computer-based exam. The Biology MCAS will take place in June, and our Grade 9 students are in the midst of preparations. A special congratulations goes out to Andrew Peterson, who has voted the SCC Spring Track and Field Boys MVP for 2019. Students from the Life Skills Classroom at ARHS traveled to Dartmouth High School to participate in the Special Olympics School Day Games. Physic classes attended Physics Day at Six Flags New England. And Senior Awards Night will be held on June 4th in the Falcon Auditorium at 6:00 p.m. Senior banquet will be held at LeBaron Hills on June 6th at 6:00 p.m. And graduation for the class of 2019 will be held on June 7th.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question for Mr. Wilson. Mr. Patrico, are you coming to the next two meetings?
Yes, I will.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We'll be sure they're on the agenda.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
So this is, you don't, I'm sorry.
Except this minutes.
Oh yeah, I forgot the minutes. Can't do that. We have the minutes of May 8th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? You can carry. So now we go to the highlight of the evening, which is right in front of us. We look forward to this every year. When we first meet at the launch of the year in August, every year we try to predict how we'll feel by the end of the year. But this always is a inspiring evening for us, and we're so happy you could be here. I think without further ado, for the presentation to the School Committee of the Aponequid Regional High School Top Ten, I defer to Dr. Starkey.
Thank you. It is one of the best nights of the school year, and it's tremendous honor to be here tonight to present to you the top 10 students of the class of 2019. And I ask that each of you students stand when your name is called, and please remain standing. We have Han Levin, our valedictorian; Taylor Babcock, our salutatorian; Juliana Martin; Alyssa Martin; Aiden McSweeney; Hayden Lenz; Matthew Santos; Leila Johnson; Emily Porter; and Fiona Conway. Please remain standing. These 10 students represent the very best of Aponequid. Collectively, they have taken numerous advanced placement courses, virtual high school courses, and honors-level courses. They are members of the National Honor Society, and they have completed way more than 200 hours of community service. They are student athletes, they are student performers, and they are club members who have Laker pride and who are a delight and privilege to know. They have, as our core values proclaim, achieved. They have been resilient, they have engaged in honorable behavior, and they have advocated for themselves and others. And just a side note, nine out of 10 of our students this evening have been in the system since kindergarten, and one took a brief hiatus. And she will talk a little bit about that in her speech this evening. But it takes a village. Each of these young men and women has summarized his or her party words and will approach the podium to share those thoughts with you tonight. So please take a seat. And I'm going to turn things over to Fiona Conway.
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Fiona Conway, and I'm so honored to be here tonight as one of Aponequid's Class of 2019 Top Ten students. During my time at Aponequid, I participated in DECA each year. I've spent every Friday night of football seasons on the sidelines as a cheerleader, and I've been a proud member of our National Honor Society chapter. I was also able, with the help of our very receptive administration, to organize a blood drive at school with the Red Cross last year. The overwhelming support from students and staff for this drive was amazing to see and made it the most fulfilling project I've worked on so far. I'm so grateful to Dr. Starkey and to our Hosa Club for helping me make that event a reality. I would also like to take this opportunity to say thank you to the people who have helped me with my academic goals. Thank you to my mom and dad for always urging me to work hard and aim high. I beg thanks to my brother Liam for all the motivation and encouragement over the years. Of course, there are countless teachers and faculty members I would like to acknowledge, but specifically, thank you to Mrs. Lippincott and Mrs. Ferrera for writing the recommendation letters for my college admissions process, and to Mrs. Nardi for reminding me of my love of foreign language. I'm also ecstatic that Mrs. Nardi will be presenting me with my diploma on graduation day. I have loved these past four years at Aponequid, but with graduation just around the corner, I've now started turning my attention towards the next four years of my education. In the fall, I'll be attending Salvi Regina University in Newport as a member of their Pell Honors Program. I'll be majoring in Global Studies with a minor in Spanish, pursuing a pre-law track. Ultimately, my goal is to become an attorney practicing international law. These are all aspirations that I hope will come to pass in the future, but at the moment, I'm just enjoying being here and savoring this milestone and eagerly awaiting graduation. Thank you so much to the School Committee for inviting us here to speak, and congratulations to my fellow classmates that are being recognized here tonight.
We didn't, we didn't inform them about the gauntlet they have to go through.
I did, but sometimes.
I'll step back.
Good evening. My name is Emily Porter, and I'm ninth in the class of 2019. During my time at Aponequid, I was lucky to have many opportunities that brought me success. I got to be a part of the National Honor Society. I got first place in my category at the state competition for DECA, and I have received the John Sexton Band Award for Excellence as a freshman. At Aponequid, I have experienced so many great memories, but many, but my favorite would be getting to go to Orlando for the National DECA Competition. Though I didn't win anything, the friends I made and the experiences I had were plenty to make it one of the most exciting times of my life. I also had the good fortune to take many challenging and interesting classes, one such as the AP United States History class, which was the first time I had such a large course load. They taught me not only how to work hard to achieve results, but also how fascinating it is to learn about the origins of our country. There are so many staff at this school that I am very grateful for. I'm very thankful for Mr. Polino, Ms. Cronin, and Mr. Rosa, who taught me to be my best self and strive for success in DECA in spite of my anxieties. Also, Ms. Rousseau, who helped me love math even though it's a subject I've always struggled with. Mr. Ledwith has also been such a big help to me in high school, helping me foster my love for music even though it's one of the hardest skills I've ever learned. I'd also like to thank Mr. Coet, who in teaching AP United States History so thoughtfully, helped me find the subject I really love and inspired me to seek a job in the field. Finally, I'd like to thank Mr. Cody for being not only an amazing teacher in European history, but also someone in school I find comfortable sharing my troubles with and knowing I will, he'll always have wise words to make sense of everything. Other than staff, I would also like to thank many of those in my personal life. A huge thanks to my family who support me in everything I do, and my friends who always know what to say whether I'm at my worst or my best. Next year, I will be attending Bridgewater State University and majoring in Political Science with hopes of one day achieving my dream of being in the United States government. One piece of advice I would give to the School Committee is to give more funding to our music program. As a part of band and drama, I've seen how difficult it is for our directors to organize fundraisers for us. Therefore, I think it would be a great help if we are granted money, even if it were a small amount. Overall, my Aponequid experience was great, and I'd like to thank you all for giving me the chance to share some of it here tonight. Thank you and have a great night.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Leila Johnson, and I am pleased to get the opportunity to speak to you tonight. During my four years at Aponequid, I have plenty of experiences that I have learned and gained so much from. I have been involved in sports, such as winter and spring track throughout high school, and softball in my underclassman years. I have made lasting friendships and learned how to manage my time effectively while balancing extracurricular activities. I made it to the state and regional level two years in a row for National History Day for my project Coco Chanel, Changing Women's Fashions in the 1900s. Meanwhile, I have served as class treasurer during high school. I found it a great experience to work with others and learn to organize fundraisers and other events that would help our class. Outside of school, I have been participating in mixed martial arts, specifically jiu-jitsu, for the past seven years, earning my way up to the rank of a black belt. I hope to continue doing martial arts and keep training in college because I have realized it's such a passion of mine. I have also competed in two NAGA tournaments throughout my time, earning first and second place. I've learned how to manage my time proficiently while balancing school activities and feel that I got the most out of my time in my four years. Some of my favorite classes I have taken include AP United States History, AP Spanish, and AP Calc. These have also been my hardest classes, and I believe that there is value in working hard to be successful in something. I have run into a huge course load in all three of the classes, and would like to specifically thank Mr. Coet, Ms. Nardi, and Ms. Gray for encouraging me to always do the best I can. And I find myself so lucky to have all of the teachers I have in the past four years and coaches that have pushed me to strive for excellence in both academics and life. Some of my favorite memories include sports and clubs like Student Council. I have been involved in the council for four years and have gone to numerous MASC and CMAS conferences during my time. One of my favorite memories in this club is going to the Worcester State Conference for the Massachusetts statewide conference for a week, and I really feel I got a feel for, sorry, I feel like I knew what college was going to be like for me in the upcoming fall. And I will be attending Stone Hill College as a Moreau Honors Program scholar and studying criminology with a Spanish minor. I am so thankful for the opportunities I have had in high school that have led me to choose what I want to study in the future. I also hope to study abroad for a semester to improve my proficiency in Spanish because I feel I am very passionate about this subject. And I subhype hope to work in federal law enforcement and intelligence and investigation, possibly in the FBI. I feel extremely lucky to be attending such a great school that offers so many opportunities. Thank you to my family for supporting me and helping me get to where I am today, especially my parents and my older sisters. And my older sister Kyla, who teaches at Gray's, will be handing me my diploma in a couple weeks. I am very grateful for all of my family that has always pushed me to get, do better, and work the hardest I can, so I am very thankful for her and everything she's done for me throughout the years. I am so excited to start the next chapter. Thank you for listening, and congratulations to my classmates. Have a great rest of your evening.
Hi, my name is Matthew Santos. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My family and I moved here from Taunton to Lakeville when I was five because of the better school system here. I received the Academic Excellence Award in Chemistry, and I'm a member of the National Honor Society. I have also been a member of DECA for the past four years and a district finalist for three of them. Since my sophomore year, I have worked as a store clerk and rental associate at Winberg Shu Valley Hardware Store. I volunteer at my church, St. John Newman, for fundraising events at the Aponequid Booster Club. Since I was young, I've always been interested in law enforcement. The summer before my junior year, I was selected and completed the Massachusetts State Student Trooper Police Program. Last year, I was also a student intern at, with the Lakeville Police, and this year I participated in Aponequid's muck crash. Given my interest in law enforcement, my most interesting class was Criminal Justice, was Criminal Law with Mr. Solomon, and my most memorable experiences come from my internship with the Lakeville Police Department. I will also never forget the field trip to Bristol County Jail with my Criminal Law class. During the session where a few prisoners talked to the class, an inmate yelled at me that if I was in jail with him, my shoes would be his, taken right off my feet. So from that point on, Mr. Solomon would say, "Hey, nice shoes," every time he saw me. My Criminal Law class and police internship reinforced my decision to study Criminal Justice in college. Therefore, my recommendation to the School Committee is to continue to arrange and offer more internships with other local organizations for students to gain work experience and to help them determine their career path. In the fall, I will be attending the Henry C. Lee College of Forensic Science and Criminal Justice at the University of New Haven. I plan on having a dual major in Criminal Justice Investigative Services and National Security and obtaining my bachelor's and master's degrees through the university's five-year program. My ultimate career goal is to work for a law enforcement agency like the FBI, U.S. Marshal Service, or U.S. Department of Homeland Security. I want to thank all of my teachers, Officer Bartholomew, my friends, and especially my family for all their guidance and support. Congratulations to all my fellow students.
If you would please turn your attention to the screen for a moment, you'll hear from Hayden Lenz, who's playing in a baseball game tonight, couldn't be here.
Hello, School Committee. My name is Hayden Lenz, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak in front of you all today. Throughout my four years of high school, I have always held myself to a higher standard and always put myself in a position where I can succeed. I currently have a 4.5 A-R point average, and I'm rated 6 in my class. In recognition of my academic achievements, character leadership, and service to my community, I was inducted at the National Honor Society. This shows that I do not hesitate to get involved, whether it's helping teach algebra and Spanish to my peers in school, or helping my local community raise money for the town and the environment. Along with my achievements, I made a lot of memories that I will never forget. Going through the college process was my favorite out of all of them. I had a lot of help and guidance, and my supporting teachers have made it enjoyable, and I was eager to find my new home for my next years to come. I also challenged myself by taking AP Biology my junior year. It's a very rigorous and demanding course with a lot of time-consuming readings and preparation for tests and labs. Mrs. Ferrera, our teacher, pushed us to do our very best, and she was so passionate with everything that she taught us that it felt as if her love for the field just poured through me. I would like to tell her just how much I appreciate her, because if it weren't for her in that class, I don't think I would be so sure in what I want to do in my future. Next year, I will be a part of the Honors College at Providence College. I'll be majoring in Biology, but on a pre-med track, hoping that one day I'll attend medical school. I would like to say thank you specifically to my parents, who have shown me nothing but unconditional support throughout my years of high school. I would also like to say thank you to my friends for making high school so memorable for me. One piece of advice for the committee would be to hold more fundraisers, where the students can get involved and support the community. I appreciate all of you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aiden McSweeney, and I'm here to share my experience at Aponequid these past four years. I've grown up in a sona and have gone through a whole public school system. I was the kid who read books on the bus, on the bus ride to school. I was pretty quiet until middle school, where I became more social and outgoing. I like to think I'm now a healthy intro-extrovert. When I started at Aponequid as a freshman, I decided to run cross-country and track and haven't stopped running since. Now I can run a 435 mile, so that's pretty good. Besides running, I've taken mostly honors courses and five AP classes. I'm a member of the National Honor Society and DECA, where I've competed in place at the district and state levels all four years. My fondest memory at ARHS are the countless practices and races with the cross-country and track programs, where I got in shape, made amazing friends, and learned about hard work and commitment. Running has grown to become a huge part of my life, and I have this school to thank for introducing me to it. I wouldn't be the same person today without it. My most challenging class is probably French 1 through 3, since I'm not the best at foreign language. And my most interesting class was AP Environmental with Mrs. Kirk, because I got to learn how we're destroying the planet, and I learned about the complex relationship between humanity and the earth. Science is pretty cool. I'd like to thank Mr. Rosa for introducing me to the business world and teaching me about the numerous opportunities that are in that field. I also have to thank Mr. Rutledge for being my coach these past four years. He's encouraged me to improve every day and have fun doing it. He's taught me that pain is temporary while victory is forever. I'd like to thank my friends and family for their unyielding support. I couldn't have made it through these past 12 years without them. I plan to attend Bryant University in the fall to major in accounting. I will be running Division 1 cross-country and track. That should be fun. I'd like to recommend that the School Committee keep expanding the students' opportunities to choose classes, enabling them to explore fields that interest them. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Juliana Martin. Thank you so much for inviting us to speak here today. I have been a part of the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District since kindergarten, and it has become a large part of who I am. My four years at Aponequid were extremely influential in my life for many reasons. I discovered my love for volleyball freshman year and was awarded my varsity letter junior year after making the varsity team. My team grew throughout the years to create such a strong bond, and although we may not have won, we were able to bring the Aponequid Lakers volleyball team the farthest it has ever gone in tournament history. Junior year, I was also inducted into National Honor Society, and I had the opportunity of joining the French Foreign Exchange Program. This really changed my life, as I now have connections across the pond and got to explore the beautiful country of France. This year, I was awarded a merit scholarship from the Westport River Watershed Alliance that works to protect local watersheds. I was honored to receive this award because I am passionate about the environment, and I find it extremely important to put effort into keeping it healthy. While I have always felt this way, my AP Environmental Science class really opened my eyes to just how important our role is in protecting the planet. This course truly motivated me to change certain parts of my lifestyle to live more sustainably. While AP Environmental was great, my favorite course in high school was also the most challenging, AP Biology. Walking into AP Bio every day last year, there was always something new to expect. This class took extreme drive and dedication, but by the end of it, I knew all of the hard work was really worth it because I learned so much and enjoyed every second of it. Ms. Ferrera's passion for the subject and devotion to her students really helped make the class that much more influential. As difficult as it may have been, I would retake her class in a heartbeat. Thanks to both of these classes, I have decided to pursue animal behavior and marine biology at the University of New Hampshire in the fall. While I had many amazing, many amazing memories at Aponequid, there was one challenge that hit me rather hard. In the spring of my junior year, right around prom, one of my best friends had been diagnosed with stage IV cancer. It was a very difficult time, as AP exams and finals were creeping up on us, yet we were preoccupied with this overwhelming news. During this time, a few teachers that I had become close with over the years were there to help my friends and I through it. Mr. Polino and Ms. Ferrera were always there if we needed anything during the school day, and I am so grateful for their kindness. They both had a positive impact on my high school experience, and I want to thank them for everything they have done to help me grow both as a student and as an individual. I also want to thank my parents for pushing me to always be the best version of myself in everything I do, and to my best friends who are an amazing support system. This school district, school district has introduced me to an amazing group of people that I'm lucky enough to call my family. In the future, I think it will be beneficial to provide more opportunities for students, especially as freshmen, to get to know others that they may not usually talk to, because sometimes the most surprising friendships are the best ones. Thank you to all the Aponequid staff in general that have helped me, helped guide me through my high school experience. It has been an amazing adventure. Thank you and good night.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Martin. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a member of the Class of 2019's Top 10. I've received Excellence Awards in Science for AP Biology and AP Environmental Science. I was homeschooled for 7th and 8th grade, and when I decided to come back for public school, I was terrified. I thought I would have no friends and would have a hard time adjusting back to public school life. Thank goodness I joined band because it'll always hold a special place in my heart. Most of my friends are in band, who helped me overcome my trials while getting used to public school. I can't choose a single fondest memory, so I have to say it would be all four years of band class. While band was a safe haven for me, AP Biology was not. I never thought myself to be a science person, so this course really challenged me. It forced me to work harder than I ever have before and even actually put an effort to do extra credit work in order to boost my grade. Ms. Ferrera, who teaches AP Biology, helped to motivate and comfort me when I thought I couldn't do it, and never failed to give me important and valuable advice. I couldn't have asked for a better biology teacher. I can't leave out mentioning Mr. Ledwith, the band director. I've had him as a teacher for all my four years of high school and after-school with the jazz band. Because of him, I've grown into the musician I am today and will forever, be forever grateful for the enormous amount of effort he pours into the music department. Next year, I'm going to attend Brigham Young University out in Utah, where I'll be studying Biology. I'm considering obtaining a master's degree in forensics and pursuing that as a career, but I'm still looking at many options. If I had to give one recommendation, it would be to create an environment that stimulates and encourages a passion for learning that would last a lifetime. Thank you. Thank you.
If you would turn your attention to the screen one last time, we have Taylor Babcock.
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Taylor and I'm here to tell you about my amazing journey at Aponequit. What I have accomplished here are things that I am extremely proud of and could have not achieved without the staff of this school. At Aponequit, I'm a member of the National Honor Society, DECA, the SRO Police Internship, and I participated in the recent mock car crash. I was the recipient of the Science Award for three years and was awarded the St. Michael's College Book Award last year. The past four years have led me to decide to pursue a major in forensic science in the fall at the University of New Haven. At Aponequit, my fondest memory was difficult to choose, but I decided on my honors English class this year with Mr. Wenzick. I have never been particularly engaged in English classes personally, but the way he teaches is so memorable and impactful and I will miss going to his class very much. Specifically, I loved reading Hamlet this year, which surprised me a lot, but it was because of his enthusiasm and love for the subject that it was so enjoyable. For me, my most challenging and the most interesting class I have ever taken was A P Physics this year. I have spent many, many study periods in Ms. Mills' room for extra help because the material is so hard to grasp at times, but it was still one of my favorite classes to go to. And I enjoyed the challenge because it was so rewarding to finally understand the topics. She helped me so much last year and this year, and she was really dedicated to helping me understand and succeed in her class and I will always appreciate that. I'd like to thank my parents for helping me get here and always pushing me to do my best inside and outside of school. And I would like to thank my friends for making the past four years of high school so enjoyable along with all my classmates and the staff here at Aponequit. Thank you.
And our Valdez Morian, Hannah Levin.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Levin and I'm delighted to be able to be here tonight. Throughout high school, I have been involved with many clubs and organizations. I'm the president of the Diversity Coalition, head of stage crew, captain of math theme, and proud member of the band, tech club, and DECA. Throughout high school, I've received four Excellence in Science awards from science classes along with other awards and scholarships such as the Harvard Prize Book Award for my academic achievements. I have loved Aponequit for the past four years and my fondest memories have all been formed within clubs. I absolutely loved having fun with my friends at math theme meets, doing some of my favorite activities, doing math and having snacks. I have also loved being part of marching, concert, and jazz band. Every football game, friendlies trip, and parade were riddled with laughs and have created long-lasting memories. I think my absolute fondest memory may have been the last performance of The Wizard of Oz this year. This was my last night of theater in high school and I was the most confident in the set and performance that I had been for any other show that we had done. I absolutely loved the set and my fellow stage crew members. The last night of the show was when I realized that I had become part of many families outside of my biological relations through stage crew, math theme, band, and many other groups in my life. As far as academics, I think the most challenging course may have been my freshman history class with Mr. Coet. Although I've taken seven A P classes throughout high school, I believe that this freshman history class was the hardest for me, yet also ultimately rewarding. As a freshman, I was not used to having to stay up that late doing work or studying. Mr. Coet's history class definitely made me into a harder-working person and helped me see the difference between middle school and high school. As far as those who have impacted my life greatly, I want to first thank Mr. So who coaches the math theme. She is the best coach I could ask for and makes math theme a welcoming place where I can feel at home. I would also like to thank Mr. Ledwith for devoting so much of his time to the music program at our school and making us all into better musicians. Finally, as far as the teachers, I would like to express my gratitude to Mr. Cody, who I never could thank enough for all he has done for stage crew. Other than my teachers, my friends and family have also helped me to be the person I am today. I would like to thank my parents who are here today, specifically my mom, who helped me greatly throughout life and especially with the college process this year. Next year, I will be attending Rensselaer and will be majoring in Computer Systems Engineering. I will also most likely go for my master's degree, possibly in computer science or just computer engineering. My recommendation for the school committee is to keep doing what you're doing and make sure that every student has access to what they need to thrive at Aponequit. Thank you for this opportunity as I'm very honored to be here today.
And there you have it, our top ten. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here. Listening to you all, everybody can chime in, but I mean, Rensselaer clearly wonderful. But I see all these places you're going and all came because you had four years that put you in a direction that you feel is your path and for that, I congratulate you. It is hard work. It is a lot of work, but you did have supports. And as a school committee, our job's the budget. That's what we do, the budget. Really exciting stuff. This is what the budget's about. And we're grateful that you were able to come out and family members were able to join you. It truly is an exhilarating and inspiring evening for all of us. Anyone else? Please chime in, folks. Yes, Derek.
Congratulations to everyone. It's important that you keep being active. I know I'm preaching to the choir because all of you have been very active in the school community, but it's very important that you stay active in the communities and whatever your endeavors are. It's very important and we love hearing your recommendations to the school committee. In fact, people that have been in those seats before you have had an effect on our budget. And it's very important that that keeps going and your voice keeps going out in the communities that you serve afterwards. So we appreciate it and you've made a difference. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess without further ado, we have a break. And we're gonna take a little time off from the school committee business so you guys can have cookies and we can all chat with you a little bit less formally. But thank you again for being here and have a cookie. Yeah, we're here. There's a gap here. Well, that was really nice.
You guys good?
Okay.
That was really nice. Okay, we're on item number six, old business. That's you.
Yes, so I have, as a result of... It doesn't, my presentation isn't as impressive as what we just witnessed. I understand, I understand it's kind of a...
And it didn't come out well, did it?
The bad way, hurry up.
So in your, in your packet, I provide you from our Director of Finance, an update, FY nineteen, we're still on target for the amount that we had indicated, you know, for one twenty-five, for E and D, that's there. The most recent news wasn't huge news, but it was, was a positive in that we, we added about twenty thousand dollars to our circuit breaker reimbursement. So that adjustment that you see there, you see the highlighted dollar amount, but the difference was about twenty thousand dollars of additional monies for us, which can only help this time of year. So that's generally speaking, the FY nineteen. What I would like to share with you is then FY twenty, which is the other item. We're set for town meeting. Full town meeting is June third. I'll be going to Freetown. Ashley Lopes will be at Lakeville. I specifically am going to Freetown. I just want to make note, I share this with the chair and a few other members. The Board of Selectmen in Freetown did reach out to me, Mr. Sullivan, and asked me to just be prepared to respond to, they have a separate article from the Highway Department to pave the parking lot there. And my understanding is although Finance and Board of Selectmen in both towns supported our budget, that article specifically was supported by the Board of Selectmen in Freetown, but not by the Finance Board. So he reached out to me as the chair to ask if I would be present, knowing that we had dual meetings and that I could speak to support of that and that he was just asking for verification and it clearly has been on our capital list for some time. Actually, Mr. Susan, my conversation with him referenced his conversation with the Highway Department and that's been about a ten-year conversation. So this was not a new piece. It's through the Highway Department and I certainly said I would be prepared if necessary to speak in support of that art, that article separate of the budget. But other than that, we are on target. As far as the budget goes, I did want to mention that because I know in Ashley's report, she shared some note of the Asswamsit parking lot. So that, that wasn't a mistake. There is, Lakeville's work there as it relates to the parking lot in Asswamsit. We're hopeful that the article passes in Freetown as well and they'll also be doing paving, if you know Freetown Elementary School, they're not talking about doing both parking lots, they're talking about doing the, the main entrance and the circle for this project here.
Which was not done when the building was renovated.
So, so that's happening. We're waiting to hear for some additional grants. We have, we have lined up security work, so it is our intent, as long as our budgets are approved, to have the additional cameras at the intermediate school and the middle school. And if we do receive some of this grant funding, we're hoping to move into the phase two at both Asswamsit and Freetown for, for cameras as it relates. And I was actually speaking to one board member, I think possibly next year, as we, I know we still have a couple of meetings left in this year, but for next year, one, one topic I think that might not be a bad topic to have as kind of an update would be security in general. We do it for technology, we do it for a variety of other programs, but in light, and I think more for the community. I had a board member come in yesterday, Mr. Sylvia, and I shared with him kind of what access we had. He hadn't been in Steve to see some of it and he was pretty, and he compared it to some other communities and I think it is important, we don't have to go into all the detail behind it, but I think it's important that we communicate dialogue that we're having with the police departments and fire departments. So it would be my recommendation that we add that as, you know...
We haven't done that in a while.
Whether it be two to three times a year, I don't think it has to be every meeting, but I think, you know, periodically, I think it would be important for the community here kind of where we're at. I'd be happy to answer any questions relative to the budget. We're on target for nineteen as we wrap up and twenty. I don't know if the committee members, you know, what, if you've talked about, you know, the, the town meetings, but certainly the administration will, will divide because obviously the meetings are at the same time.
Yep, June third.
And we don't have another school committee meeting prior to that, right? Our next school committee meeting is June fifth and the nineteenth.
Right, well, that's why we're all relieved that we're in pretty good shape on this. Any new business?
Not new, but I just, I guess I consider other, just on, on reference to the June fifth and nineteenth. So I guess the good news is we spent, and I, and I think it's the right thing to do and I appreciate the committee doing it, we really kind of streamlined this fact, this meeting to focus on students and their achievements. As a result, we're gonna have some pretty action-packed meetings, the next two meetings. We have three textbooks to adopt. We have a Biology, a Precalculus. I'm giving you a little heads up to preview to what you should see in your agenda and world geography, all topics that Dr. Korea has shared. I actually have all those books sitting in my office if you are interested. Dr. Korea asked me to convey that. Every now and then, when we put the packets together, it's a week in advance and someone will say, I don't get a chance. And rather than see this six hundred-page, literally, when I say six hundred-page calculus book, they are in my office and they're available if you'd like to, if any members would like to stop by. We have handbooks that need to be presented. School Resource Officer Agreement. Nothing out of the, no, nothing out of the norm, but hopefully the budget goes through, we kind of move. But I, I do anticipate some lengthier meetings for the fifth and the nineteenth. The good news is, I guess to keep in mind, we don't have a July and August meetings scheduled at that time. We did have a screening committee meeting for the Director of Curriculum. Sherry represented the school committee. I met with Mr. Sylvia, who's the other representative. He wasn't able to make the meeting, but he's been part of the process, including screening applicants and we're, we're looking to schedule some interviews for candidates next week. So we should have an update at the June fifth meeting as it relates to staffing. Technology Plan Update, June nineteenth, second meeting there. So I'm just, I'm trying to hit upon a couple of topics that I'm not kind of floating out there to kind of see. But like I said, as a result, I think it's, it's real, a real positive. I don't know if Mrs. Fox is gonna comment, so I'll wait till the end when it gets to other business, but pretty significant event is happening on the campus on Friday. That's a community, not only our community, but for the entire state and the country and Mrs. Fox.
It's a, I don't remember what the act...
Medal of what? Medal of Liberty?
The Medal of Liberty for Tyler Treyhan, who was killed by an explosive device in Iraq in two thousand nine. He was the first service person from Freetown to have died in combat and action since World War One. In the, and he, he comes from a very active and wonderful family. So Molly's already, his sister is already a part of the community. Maureen Treyhan was active in the schools forever when her children were in school and has, has stayed active in the community, she really has. And active now for families who have lost their sons and daughters in war. So some of you know, most of us all know, that the gymnasium, the new gymnasium at Freetown Elementary was dedicated to him a number of years ago. And at that event, they had the moving, the portable wall that had, in this case, the Massachusetts soldiers. So this one is being convened by the local delegation and it's at Freetown Elementary on Friday, which is the twenty-fourth.
Ten.
At ten AM. And it will be a lot of dignitaries present, but most of all, for this family, this is a definitely a pivotal moment in their struggle to make sure that Gold Star families and the ones they've lost get the recognition they deserve in their communities. And I think, I do applaud the Treyhan family for always being strong advocates for their son and for others who don't come home. It was a tragic loss. He was a very young man on a, actually, he was training, he was on a SEAL Team path is where he was going when he was taken from us, very tragically, and it was April of two thousand nine. I remember it like it was yesterday. And interestingly enough, his nephew, Molly's son, was born on Tyler's birthday. So it, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. Good, good for the Treyhans. So I will definitely be there and if anybody else can attend, please do.
They reached out to the schools to ask to use our facility, obviously named after Tyler. So our, our contribution was, was small, other than we obviously are accommodating Mr. Ward's work. We have our third grade chorus, who's gonna, who've been asked by, by the Governor's Office, because it is the Governor's Office who will be represented, who will hand out the medal.
We may possibly see the Lieutenant Governor.
We anticipate the initial agenda is Lieutenant Governor supposed to be present.
Well, she's in, I have a meeting with her later in the day. She's at another function at UMass Dartmouth, so I think she's in the region. I think she probably will do her best to be there.
And we have all the representatives.
We have all the reps that are gonna be there. I think you'll have a number of people from the Navy, which typically happens. In fact, when we dedicated the roundabout to Tyler, we had then Lieutenant Governor Murray, we had the naval band present and that was extremely moving. And that, that roundabout is maintained by volunteers and it always looks awesome.
So it's a tough time, we, I recognize that, but if you're able to...
Yeah, go around.
Certainly any school board members are, I know Gene is gonna represent the school committee. At it, it's ten o'clock, it's at the Freetown Elementary School Gymnasium.
I wouldn't miss it for anything. Yes, sorry.
Rick, just a confirmation, the next meeting will have a full staffing update because I know there's a number of positions that are still...
Yep.
Yeah, so, so it's a work in progress when, I guess I, I should have also added class size, we're gonna have updates there, transportation. So some of the things, the reports that you have, we have kind of pushed out, those will all happen. I can give you an up-to-date staffing.
That's what I'm saying, that's the plan for the next meeting.
But I typically wait till I kind of get everything kind of finalized. We have a lot of mix, moving parts. I, I would say in the last three or four days, we have hired eight, six to eight individuals, some of which, I would say fifty to sixty percent of them right now are taking new assignments within the district, so then it opens up another. So it's a little, so yes, I will absolutely give you a staffing, but understand it's a real fluid piece right now.
It's a work in progress, yeah.
And, and, you know, probably Betty served on the nineteenth, but if you're seeing postings and you're seeing a, a grade three, I'm just using an example, and it's a result of someone moving to a different position. And that's what's happening right now. So Steve, I don't know if that answered your question.
No, I think it's just a, a yes or that was the plan. I think that's...
To do that. Yeah, yeah, I can, I can certainly reference those positions that are currently, that have been filled to date and those that are projected to be.
And then the technology plan on the nineteen, this is a, a multi-year plan with some numbers associated with it from a budgeting perspective.
That is what was, that was the directive given to the Director of Technology. I have not seen a document that reflects that, but that, that was clearly the expectation.
He usually does that.
Yeah, and it is, it's been about a month. Yeah, and it is, it's been about a month, and I have to tell you, the last two to three weeks for the Technology Department has basically been spent in MCAS bunkers, bunkers, you know, with all that. So, I think that's, when I made the request about this and told them we had two June dates, he took the second piece, I think it was just to allow for a little bit more time. But Steve, I'll communicate that again, and that certainly is the understanding.
Ms. Barron. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Nope.
I don't have the policy book here in front of me, but I believe that the textbook policy to purchase new textbooks requires two meetings. One to present, understand them, and the second one for a vote. Will that be a problem for purchasing?
No, no, it won't be. No, I think that's why we're looking at that, the 5th, because then we can put it up for the 19th.
I think that's what our policy says.
No, I think you're right.
Oh, good. Steve's gonna look it up right now, perfect.
Good.
My understanding is these purchases are FY '20 anyways, right? So, orders that can be made typically aren't gonna be taken, so we're not trying to spend money down from '19 is, that's the...
Well, no, I think it's just that we, in theory, have an opportunity to review and ponder before we actually act, yeah.
At the second meeting.
I just think we should follow the policy, if that's what it does say. The other thing is, as far as the screening committee, we met this afternoon, as Rick said, I am going to send out an email to all of you asking if you have a specific question. Rick's asked us to submit questions, so if you can kind of give that some thought, mull it over in your head for the next...
John, I already have my question.
Pardon me?
I already have my question.
Okay, if you can just email it back, I'll remind you.
Sure you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, did you have something else?
Just to wrap up the Top Ten, you know, we always hear their advice and Derek brought it up. The three buckets that came across loudly clear, obviously some sort of internship work experience, exposure. Two people said it very loudly, opportunity for all students to be successful in that, you know, we hear the Top Ten, but you know, there's 115 to 200 kids in there, and that may be something for the strategic planning committee. And the music funding, something we hear every year, so I don't know if that's something that we can...
I mean, yeah, and if I may, I just, so you're absolutely right, I think that does capture, I think they talked a little about community, it was interesting how they referenced fundraisers, but what they really were talking about is community piece, which I think was nice to hear, because initially I was taken back when I heard fundraiser, and then it wasn't really about, it was more about being engaged in the community. The internships and the practical, I mean, that's real-world experience, right? That's the direction that colleges and folks are going to, so it's clearly a direction we need to, we need to expand.
We really do.
One of the challenges we face here, let's be honest, is the number of opportunities that you have locally to do it, right?
There's two things, is that, and there's also, quite simply, and I was talking to a parent about that, the child labor laws really limit the kinds of things the kids could do, so, who was with me when we were talking about that and said, Derek, I think the technology piece, they can go to any of these stores and they'll whizz through the inventory, or they can do accounting, things like that, there's a lot they could do that doesn't get in the way of that.
I had a good sidebar conversation, like many of you did, with about five or six students, and they referenced the other piece, which I thought was interesting, was music.
Oh, yeah.
And so, what I said to them, very candidly, and kind of echoed, I said, "The committee listens." I said, and the example I gave there is, in fine and performing arts is the art program.
Yeah.
In your time, in your tenure here at Aponequit, you was one art teacher. Look at what's happened with the expansion of that, just doubling that staff and the program. And I think the next step, we need to take a look at that with music, and I think that will happen. Our recent assistant principal, who's just hired at the high school, has a music background, and I think has already offered some insight into that.
Well, so, Mr. Ledwith will be very helpful.
But I completely agree, but that also talks about that well-rounded piece, I mean, it's very, other than the AP classes and those kids, they're usually talking about those other experiences that they've had, right? The band and DECA.
It's believed to the business guy going to business who asked a very poignant question of our budget, who gets the most money? So, it was a pretty direct question there.
But it doesn't, I guess I was sharing with the kids, it doesn't take, I think sometimes that they feel, you know, they hear that, it sounds like a big task. It took one staff position, and not that that one individual made the difference, but it allowed the program...
Well, it changed the whole consideration.
You have to start somewhere.
And it really has made a difference, and I think that's probably something we need to take a look at. I think we put a little bit more emphasis, rightfully so, in the middle school and intermediate school where we hadn't, and looked at some of those areas this year. I think we've got that addressed, and I think for the high school, I think that's probably an area we need to take a look at, move forward. I agree.
Well, I'd really like to see us do more internships. If I had more time, I'd try to help with that, I just don't. But I used to do that, I used to get internships for students back in the day, and it really is impactful.
Amazon's right in our backyard, I'm sure there's something that can be.
Yeah, again, child labor laws, there's bad equipment in there, so...
Well, you're not in the warehouse, but there's obviously...
Oh, you mean the technology piece, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You are correct, it's two meetings.
Two meetings.
So, it'll be a first reading, you know, presentation, and the 5th with action at the next meeting. But they are already available, if you, I mean, if you literally want to see the book, probably it's easier to wait to see the presentation.
Kind of clamor and you get right up there tomorrow.
Especially for that pre-calculus book sitting there too, so...
Well, the review committee has to take the associative test with that course, so...
Well, I'm on the screening.
If you come in my office, just in case someone was gonna challenge me on that one, I've left, remember, I taught biology, I left the biology one up top, because I figured if I, in case some kid comes in and does challenge me, I'm hoping he goes to the biology book, I might be okay. But other than that, we're good.
Are we, I think we're good, I think we can adjourn, and thank you, everybody, this was a good meeting, this is always the one that makes you know, okay, we're doing some stuff right. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't everybody jump on it, okay? All in favor, aye.